Very good, then. Good evening. I will call the regular meeting of the Clayton City Council to order. It is Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. It is 7:00 PM, and Janet, would you please run the Zoom video?
Absolutely. And here we go.
Due to COVID-19, this meeting will be conducted as a Zoom webinar pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N. 2920, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is being webcast on the City of Clayton's website. The mayor will call upon its council, presenters, staff, and other speakers by name, and ask that they speak clearly and state their name before giving comments or remarks. Persons participating via webcast and Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial *9, and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Telephone attendees will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their name, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by Clayton City Clerk by 5:00 PM today will be entered into the record, but will not be read out loud. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they are free to do so and should raise their hand, and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. The chat feature is not active. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date.
Very good. Thank you, Janet. And now, would you please call the roll call to verify that we have a quorum?
Yes. Councilmember Catalano?
Here.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes, I'm here.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Here.
And Mayor Pierce?
Yes, I am here as well.
So, thank you all. And Jim, would you please read the Pledge of Allegiance for us, and we will all silently follow along?
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. The next item on our agenda this evening is the Consent Calendar. It's relatively brief. Most of these are routine items in nature. Are there any items on the consent calendar that anyone wishes to pull for a separate discussion and vote? CW?
I just have a quick question about item C.
Okay.
3C, with regard to the certification of the election. Those results get put in, the finals results get put into the record? Is that what happens?
That is correct. Councilmember Wolf?
Okay. That's the only question I have. I don't need to pull it, but thank you.
Okay. Anything else? One, what, you want to pull the first item C or the second item C?
Yeah, I would just say there's two item Cs.
Oh, is there? So, is consent, uh, I don't see. Oh, yeah, the same. It is. It's the second item C, but I'm not pulling it. I just had a question about it. So, that's, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Anyone else have comments or questions about any items on the consent calendar? Or do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion by Wolf, the second by Juan. Did we receive any public comments on this item, Jan?
No public comments were received on this item.
But I do see one person has their hand raised, and this would be the appropriate time for comment on the consent calendar only. If there is a comment on any other item, that should come at that appropriate time. So, Ernie Trinidad has the hand up, so let's open that line. Yes, Ernie, did you have a comment on, on the consent calendar?
I'm sorry, can you hear me yet?
Yes, can.
Oh, hi, hi, Mayor Pierce. No, I did not. I'm not sure why my hand was raised, but it is not.
Okay. Well, now you, you figure out how to do it, and you can raise it when you want to for another item. Very good. All right. I see no other public comment, and so we do have a motion by Wolf, the second by Juan. Janet, would you please call the roll call for the consent calendar, please?
Sure. Councilmember Catalano?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
And Mayor Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We have none of the non-council types of recognitions and presentations this evening, so we will go directly to the remarks by our outgoing council members, which is Councilmember Catalano and myself, and so Tuya, I'm going to let you go first.
Great, thank you so much. So, I just wanted to say, I think, a couple words and also a couple thank yous. So, I think overall, when we look at the 2020 election, it was certainly an interesting one. I think we saw nationally and locally some politicians sort of banning a divide because they believe it was good for their personal politics, which has caused our country and I think our city to be quite divided at this point, to the point where we don't always even have a common set of facts as a basis how we move forward. But at a local level, however, I think the reality is that we are going to do better by not staying divided. So, I would hope that the five council members will move forward as a united council, and not as competitors, or not as one council member against another. And I think that also requires our citizens to not tolerate behavior that tears us apart, but instead demands that we work together respectfully to maintain and improve Clayton. I'm really glad that Holly and Peter were elected. Both of them have, both of them have contributed to this community for years. Both chose to run a positive and clean campaign despite some of the nasty stuff that was also directed at them. I've known Holly and Peter for many years, and both are more than capable of being awesome council members. They are both involved. They are independent thinkers. I think they'll do their homework, and I'm confident that they will act in the best interest of, of us all. For me personally, obviously, I would have liked to contribute more and serve another four years, but being on the council is also not the only way to contribute to Clayton. We have many festivals, nonprofit organizations, and other things that run on volunteer power, and many of our residents participate and contribute to our city in many different ways. I am also leaving with my head held up high because I know I did the right thing, and I did not make my council member decisions simply based on how they would impact my likelihood of getting reelected. My votes on the council were based on legal and factual accuracy, and doing what I believed was in the best interest of the city as a whole, some of which have, has now been tested in court as well and proven to be the case. So, I have certainly enjoyed serving the city as a planning commissioner and also as a council member, and I feel very honored to have served as the mayor in 2019. I want to thank everyone who has supported me, including in my campaign. I think there are too many names to mention, but I truly appreciate all the support, all the emails and calls recently and in the last few years, and having met some, so many people during my term. This morning, I received a delivery of flowers that you see right behind me. It came very generically from Clayton residents, so whoever were the persons behind this, I want to thank you so much. It was a very nice surprise. Then, I also want to thank my kids, Hannah and Eric, both of whom have been part of the city council activities one way or another during the years. And at the end of the day, I think one of the key reasons many of us are involved in our community is because of our kids, and that's certainly the case for me, too. And then, last but not least, I want to mention a couple words of appreciation to Julie. I know that there are many more residents who would echo the words I'm about to say, but I get to have the mic for a couple more minutes, so I'm going to take the opportunity. So, I moved to Clayton 15 years ago, and like everyone else who has moved here in the last 30 years, we moved here because we liked what Clayton offers, which is due to the decisions Julie has been a part of during the last 20 years, 28 years on the council, and the five years before that on the planning commission. Decisions as relatable as many of us living in homes in developments that were approved with her input. She has been a very active council member and a community member for all of her years, and I think most of our residents do not know how much she has done for Clayton. That includes activities in Clayton, but she's also been a huge advocate regionally, and none of us on the current council or on the next council can fill her shoes easily or quickly, if ever. So, I, I think without Julie on the council, the city is certainly losing a lot of historical perspective, a lot of ideas that come from years of experience, and a lot of connections she has regionally that have made us aware of grants, helped us lobby legislation, and so much more. Fortunately, I think she's not going anywhere, but I think her experience and knowledge on the council will certainly be missed. In the last year with her as the mayor, she was also an excellent example of showcasing how the council can and should be a unit. For example, in most cases, when a resident would email her, she would share that info or the response with the other council members instead of guarding that info to herself only. And I think that is a perfect example of the fact that although the council is made up of five individuals, sometimes with different opinions and perspectives, it is still a unit that exists as a policymaking body for all of Clayton. So, I think with that, I want to thank Julie. I want to congratulate the newest council members, Holly and Peter. I want to wish nothing but the best to the new council as a whole. And then lastly, I want to thank Clayton residents for having given me the opportunity to serve. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Tuya. That was very sweet and very heartfelt, and you have done so much for this community, and I, I, I'm going to go ahead and make my comments first, and then I'm going to try to get through reading the proclamation that we have for Tuya. And I, too, want to say a very sincere thank you to the many, many people of Clayton who have supported me over the last 33 years as I've worked to serve our town. Your support is really overwhelming and greatly appreciated. I want to thank my many colleagues that I've had the pleasure to serve with during that time, as well as those who came before us who laid the path for us to follow. And we cannot minimize how much they did to set us up for success here in Clayton. They certainly laid the groundwork for us. And I want to say, too, it's not just the council members, but the planning commissioners, the hundreds of volunteers, the many, many unsung heroes in our town who give of their time and energy to add to the depth that makes our community so very rich. To all of the many staff members and city managers that I've had the tremendous pleasure to work with, starting with Val Alexa when we just started to plan the Oakhurst project in 1987, and we added a redevelopment agency through managers Tom Steele, Richard Hill, and certainly my dear friend Gary Napper. We've also had several interim city managers who guided us in between those permanent city managers. And in two weeks, the new council will have Raina Schwartz join them as our new city manager. I am really glad that she has chosen to leave our city. These people that went before have created the template. When I joined the city, we had 4,500 people in town. We didn't have sewers or storm drains or even sidewalks in most of our neighborhoods. Working together, we filled it with new homes and families and, and wonderful people who have made the visions of our predecessors and ours a reality. We've welcomed newcomers who have become part of the rich fabric of our community that makes many, many people say, including during this last election, Clayton is perfect. Don't change a thing. But change is part of what we are about. Gradual planned change and adaptation that allows our children and grandchildren to come back home and raise their families where they grew up. I hope together our community can find a way to continue to welcome those new families and share the richness of our community with them. With careful planning and collaboration, we can do that as a community. I have no doubt. With all the challenges and obstacles that we are facing, I'm often asked why some of us choose to serve in public office. How do you stand the politics? Well, lately, it's become a real challenge. But if politics were all there was to this job, none of us or few of us would actually go into it and want to do it. I think my colleagues would agree that most of us don't do it for the ego. We think of ourselves as public servants, not politicians. Most who choose to serve and stay at the local level do it simply because we want to serve our community. It's really very gratifying and humbling to know that most of you really appreciate what we do. I'm reminded and smile every day that there are wonderful folks in our neighborhood who quietly appreciate our efforts. I'm honored when they greet me in the store and tell me that they think about the issues affecting Clayton. I love getting the emails. I hope they won't stop. And while the mayor's corner, or column, whatever it's called these days, will have a new author, I will still be around, so I hope everyone will stay in touch. I will certainly be around as a volunteer. You'll see me out and about at all the events when we can have them safely again, when we can have the concerts in the Grove again. I hope to be out there raising money for the next year's concert. As I reflect on this past year as your mayor, I'm more convinced than ever that it's the citizens of our community that make great Clayton the great place that it is. It came out in droves for this election, and it was important. People often give credit to the council and the city hall for making Clayton what it is today, but we're just the caretakers. It's the community that makes us great, and I thank you all for giving me the opportunities to serve in that capacity. I really also want to say a huge thank you and appreciation to our, congratulations to our new council members and to all of those who participated in the election. I think Holly and Peter are going to make a tremendous impact on our council. They are going to give us much more diversity, and I think that's a wonderful thing. And I am looking forward to watching them soar. But you know, I really have to say, in addition to thanking all my current council members and all of those that have done before, I want to say how much I admire Tuya for what she has done and brought to us. Her expertise has been really invaluable. And with that, I have a proclamation that I will show you in just a second. I'm going to turn off my virtual background so you can see this. You can see this in my dirty office. Okay. So, this is the proclamation to you. You will get it when you get back. And I will read that for all of you. You'll get to see it again in just a second. Okay. So, this is a proclamation from the City of Clayton in the State of California declaring Friday, March 8th, 2021 as Tuya I. Catalano Day. And it reads, "Whereas, Tuya I. Catalano has admirably and honorably served the City of Clayton as a duly-elected council member from December 6th, 2016 to December 1st, 2020, including as mayor in 2019. And whereas prior to serving on the city council, Tuya served on the Clayton Planning Commission from July 2006 to July 2011, and again from July 2015 to December 2016, providing critical leadership as Planning Commission Chair in 2009. And whereas Tuya's considerable professional expertise as a practicing San Francisco land use attorney was frequently valuable to the planning commission, the city council, and staff as Clayton navigated local decisions regarding CEQA and land development issues, her expertise will be sorely missed as the city examines future projects. And whereas Tuya Catalano has been an asset to the Clayton community for many years, chairing the Clayton Business and Community Association Scholarship Committee, serving as the CBCA's event volunteer cheerperson responsible for coordinating volunteers for Art and Wine, Oktoberfest, and the barbecue cook-up. It is no small task as she effectively works with hundreds of volunteers, assigning responsibilities and schedules. And whereas Tuya is a dedicated mother who spends considerable time supporting her children's endeavors ranging from sporting activities, including in a hill swim team, to triathlons, to scouts, to willingly being the carpool mom taking kids to Northgate High School when they're in session. And whereas, Tuya Catalano is a founding member of Clayton Speaks, wherein she is a steadfast person of conviction. She is an ally for people of color and a steward against racism. And whereas, Tuya Catalano was instrumental in the Do the Right Thing program for students to recognize outstanding character traits, and in initiating the Unsum Heroes Program for adults who have contributed selflessly to our community. And whereas Tuya's calm demeanor belies her passion for our Clayton community, she has always been a strong advocate for defending Clayton's integrity and respecting its history, preferring to ascertain why things have been done before being done as they are before rushing to make changes. She clearly understands and appreciates that large and small cities have very different needs. And whereas, in her various roles, Tuya can be called selfless. She always puts others' needs in front of her own. In a one-on-one conversation with Tuya, you know she genuinely cares about Clayton and its community of people. She carefully weighs how city decisions impact others and the community as a whole. Even in times of disagreement, Tuya is not disagreeable. She displays a remarkable civility in explaining her positions with clarity and respect. And Tuya leaves public service on the council, she will be missed as a leader and as a person. And now therefore, I, Julie K. Pierce, as mayor of the City of Clayton on behalf of a grateful city council and community, do hereby recognize and honor the multitude of local government and civic contributions of our colleague, Tuya I. Catalano, and deeply thank her for her many years of service to the Clayton community. And I hereby proclaim Monday, March 8th, 2021, which is also International Women's Day, as Tuya I. Catalano Day in the City of Clayton, California, in the U.S. Thank you, Tuya. You are-
Thank you. That was super nice. Thank you.
You are charming. I am so glad to have served with you. So, those are our comments, and I have been instructed by Fran that I am to turn this public comment over to someone else to run.
Yeah, I, I do have, there's a couple things I want to introduce as well. First, I, I do want to thank both Tuya and Julie for your service. I know that this is, it's a lot of hard work, and you guys certainly put in the work. So, I, I respect all the work that you guys have done for the city and on behalf of the community. You know, many, you know, earlier, I believe Julie, for you especially, I dropped off at your house, and others dropped off at your house, certain things. I did want to recognize that first, that many community members participated in a gift to acknowledge you Julie for all of your accomplishments over the past three decades. I delivered this, this to your home yesterday, interrupted your Washington football game. Sorry about that. And so, I, I told you, though, I wrapped it. My wrapping is not very good. I, I did want to-
Wrap.
Yeah, see? Yeah. And I, I wanted, I told you not to open it until the meeting, so I was hoping that you could do that now. I'll give you a moment. You could show. It's unfortunate that we can't be together while we do this, but this is where we're at now, so if you, if you wouldn't mind, you could show up for the camera and, and there's, there's a couple other things. I'll, I'll give you a moment for that.
Okay. You like to use tape.
I'm not a good rapper.
You actually wrap it very well.
He's more of a country singer than a rapper.
Oh, dear.
I, I like all kinds, all kinds.
All right. It is a book.
It, it is a book.
It says, "City of Clayton" with our logo on the front.
Just a history of Clayton.
Yeah, really. You could flip through briefly, but I, I'll describe for, for the people who can't see it. You know, we-
One of the ins of please.
Yeah. We started this a little while ago, and we really, we reached out to many members of the community and, you know, beyond the community just to kind of gather and gather some letters that kind of really represent what you've meant to the community. And so, you know, I, I can't do it justice really, but it was, it's just a gesture to show appreciation for the work that you've done. So, hopefully you enjoy. You could read at your leisure.
Yeah, I'll probably have a couple of tissues in my hand going through this. There are some great ones here.
Yeah. So, I, I hope you appreciate as much as, as we appreciate your service.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this more than you know.
And then, there's, there's two more things, so I want to make sure I get those two.
I have these sneaky hat behind me. I knew he had the front window open watching for something.
Okay. Wait, wait. Is this, uh, this is-
Is that what you're thinking about?
No? Okay, so there's four things. Okay, so that's, that's, that's one A, or sorry, one B.
All right.
Mayor Proton, if you could ask, I have a member of the public with their hand raised, and I think it's going to be Terry Denzil. She'd like to just do-
Sure.
Is that this one?
No, that's, well, the flowers and maybe that. Terry, are you on?
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
We could recognize Terry.
Can you hear me?
I think you're, I think you're on now.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay. So, so Julie, Steve just barged in with some flowers and a framed gift for you. So, I just wanted to read to you. The residents of Clayton would like to express our appreciation and gratitude to both Mayor Julie Pierce and Councilmember Tuya Catalano for your many years of dedication to our community. Please accept these gifts of flowers and a framed quote for each of you from us. So, Tuya received her flowers, as she mentioned last night. Her framed quote, CW has it, so he can show it on the, on the screen. Julia, or Julie, in your framed quote, your, in your frame is a quote from Winston Churchill that reads, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." For 28 years, you've tirelessly given not only to your Clayton community, but to the Bay Area community as a whole. You've had a part in developing fundamental long-term strategies for our community, and you've brought countless initiatives to fruition in Clayton and beyond. Your efforts are an integral part of the fabric of Clayton. Tuya, in your frame is a quote from Sheryl Sandberg that reads, "Leadership is about making others better as a result of your presence and making sure the impact lasts in your absence. In a small community like Clayton where city staff and resources are always stretched thin, your professional experience, initiative, and drive always brought a unique insight to the discussion and helped us to be creative and effective in our endeavors. In addition, your past, your passion toward diversity and inclusion helped bring about- In addition, your passion toward diversity and inclusion helped bring about important conversations in Clayton and empowered many to speak and engage when they may not have tried. Julie and Tuya, you've made your mark on Clayton, and for that, we are, excuse me, for that, we are eternally grateful. We wish you all the success in your future endeavors, and please leave these roles knowing you are appreciated and you will be missed from the residents of Clayton.
Wow, thank you.
Okay, Steve, bring in the new car.
Did we want to, we could call, we could call, recognize George. That'd be great.
Uh oh, you're going to make me cry now. This is going back and...
I need to be more specific. George Escutia, sorry. Just two Georges with their hands up.
Well, I hope I don't make anybody cry, Julie and Tuya. Good evening, City Council members of Clayton City Council, members of the greater Clayton community. My name is George Escutia. I am the District Director for Senator Steve Glazer. And under normal circumstances, I would be there to present a resolution and certificates of recognition to your outgoing members. Unfortunately, this is a life now. But the sentiment is there, and the senator's over in Concord right now, and I'm here with you guys. I think I got the better deal because I love Clayton personally, and I love the council here. But at first, I just want to thank Tuya for your last four years of service to the city of Clayton. And I know that we'll continue to see you do great work in the community. So thank you on behalf of Senator Glazer and the people of the 7th Senate District. Julie, you are an amazing woman, and I'm grateful to have called you a friend. Over the last five years, I've been able to connect with you and learn a lot from you. So I am going to miss you and miss our conversations. We have some resolutions and certificates that will be dropped off at your home either tomorrow or the day after. But you guys, your impact on the communities and your service has been recognized. And I know that this is kind of out of order, but I do have to jump off to another call, but I want to say welcome to the new Clayton City Council members, and I look forward to meeting you all and working with you guys on this next chapter in Clayton's history. Thank you very much.
Thanks, George. And don't be a stranger. I'm not leaving town.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George. We could call you, I see one other hand, Chris Wickler, if we could bring Chris in.
Hello, can you see me? Am I on? Good evening, Council members. Chris Wickler here with the Office of Supervisor Karen Mitchoff, and I just wanted to share words of gratitude on behalf of the supervisor and myself for outgoing members Catalano and Mayor Pierce for their years of service to Clayton and their excellent work and civic engagement. It's been a pleasure working with you over my shorter tenure than George, who is our last speaker, you know, but I'm really grateful that I got to learn from you and interact. And on behalf of the supervisor, you know, very grateful for all the work that you've done to, you know, it's served the city of Clayton. And then I'd also just want to thank, do a special shout out to Mayor Pierce for, upon her retirement too, from the council and her 30 years to me. I have, I do have a resolution from the Board of Supervisors, and I'll just read the last paragraph if you'll indulge me for a moment. In each role, whether it be on this Clayton City Council or regionally with Contra Costa County or on our regional bodies, Mayor Pierce has played an integral role in fostering consensus among divergent views and has served as a forward-looking leader for the city, county, region, and state, working tirelessly to forge meaningful partnerships between each level of government over her 33 years of service to the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors recognizes Julie Pierce on the occasion of her retirement from the Clayton City Council and honors her hard work and dedication to good governance at all levels of government and thoughtful planning for the future of our community. So, Supervisor, I will be having, sending this over to your address. And just once again, from the county, we're very thankful for both of your work tirelessly to serve our community and won't be a stranger either. I'll look forward to seeing you at the amazing festivals and community events that Clayton has to offer. And until then, I hope everyone's safe and nice again for letting me share those comments.
Thank you, Chris, and thank the supervisor for us. She is a dear friend.
We have one more hand raised. It's George Webb. If we could, well, now there's another, but if we could bring in George, that'd be great. George, you are currently muted.
All right, now I'm unmuted. Julie, this is the boss.
It is.
It is. Hey, I wouldn't miss this thing.
You've been writing years.
And in this book that you have, you're going to find a couple of pictures that I submitted back 1994 when we dedicated the fields. And I think that and O'Kurst were our two best achievements in working together for the betterment of the city. And there's a picture of Bob and Eldora Hoyer in there. And again, to you, best of luck to you and Steve and the rest of the group out there from Cold, Colorado. As I say, I wouldn't miss this for the world, and best of luck, and your contributions to Clayton are unmeasured.
Well, thank you, my dear friend. You were my mentor. I learned it from you, so thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. I see one more hand raised. Scott Hagerty.
You're making this tough, folks.
That's the goal.
Well, I think I was just called on.
You were, my friend.
Hello, how are you?
I'm hanging in.
I just popped into the city of Dublin on a Zoom. My name is Scott Hagerty. I'm Alameda County Supervisor. And I just kind of went through the same thing that Julie's going through, and it's extremely tough. It's extremely tough to sit through these things, but for me, it's extremely tough to say goodbye to an old friend, too. I don't know if you guys know how important the city of Clayton has been made over the term that Julie has been involved with other regional agencies. You know, when I first got elected, I thought, oh, I don't care what happens at these regional agencies. You know, I'm just going to worry about, you know, my own district and my own county. And I quickly found out how very wrong I am. And I can tell you that I have never seen in my 24 years of being a county supervisor anybody re-elected to the possession of ABAG. And solely for the purpose of creating a better governmental agency of one, meaning she was instrumental in moving these two agencies together, which is now, as we found out at a vice committee meeting, ABAG is flush with money and they were on the verge of bankruptcy. And, you know, I'm going to tell you, you have no idea how passionate Julie was at MTC, taking us all to task and fighting not only for Contra Costa County, but even her own city. And I really hope that each and every one of you understand the jewel that you had. And I hope that you know that her shoes will be extremely hard to fill. And I could even say this, I don't think anybody can do it. Because I don't think anybody can find a way to muscle themselves on both ABAG and MTC from Contra Costa County and move to positions of power. So to my friend Julie, I love you. You know that. You know, this Steve guy, I don't really know much about him, but you know, he's all right. Been with him a couple, hung out with him a couple of times, you know. But, you know, you're just a dear friend. You're an excellent colleague, and you're a wonderful councilwoman and mayor. And I wish you and I were just a little bit younger and had a little bit more gas in the tank because there's a few things that we're probably leaving for the younger people, but it's a good thing. So Julie, to you, I would say the first, first order of business for you is clean out that office.
You got it.
Yeah, that's the first thing. Get rid of the binder.
Behind me is all Steve's. That's not mine.
Well, clean Steve's office.
Yeah.
And then just get some, some rest and relaxation, and I can tell you that you and Steve are always welcome in Tennessee.
I thank you, my friend. We'll take you up on that for sure.
All right. I love you.
I love you too.
Okay, I do not see any other hands raised. If you are here and wish to make a comment, feel free to raise your hand, and we can call on you. Oh, here we go. All right. Jenny Ye. You are currently muted, Jenny. There you go. I think you're still muted.
Mute. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, hello, everybody. So I don't know if this, this is my first time to participate in the meeting, so I'm not sure. Am I raising, raising my hand right? Because I just said a quick question.
Yeah, this, I just interrupt you very briefly. This is, this section of the meeting is for remarks and for outgoing council members. If you have a comment on a later agenda item or a non-agenda item, that will come later in the meeting.
Okay, okay. Then I can, should I just hang up?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, if you raise your hand at the appropriate time, then we'll recognize you again.
Okay, so what should I do? Just hang up?
Yeah, well, we could, we'll move you back to the participant, if you could do that, Shannon, that would be great. Thank you.
Julie, Jenny is going to miss you terribly.
Thank you.
I, sure. I think Keith, oh, here he is. You read my mind. Keith. You're currently muted, Keith.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, well, I was going to wait until later, but this seems to be the appropriate time. I also want to make comments thanking both Tuya and Julie. I'll start with Tuya. I did serve with Tuya on the Planning Commission and on City Council, and was always very impressed with Tuya's preparation for all meetings. She became our city's land use expert on both the Planning Commission and the City Council, providing layman explanations for the many different developmental issues that continue to come up before our city. So it was very, very valuable and an extreme asset to both the Planning Commission and then the City Council when Tuya did serve on both those bodies. So we really are going to miss those opportunities for that input. Again, she was able to explain so we could understand what the issues were and assist us with coming up with the best solutions for Clayton. Tuya also participated in many other volunteer efforts in Clayton with CBCA as volunteer coordinator, scholarship chair, and other activities around town. And I expect we will continue to see Julia in our town. She also started some new outgrowths really of the mayor's position by having an open meeting, or open house really, on most Saturdays, where she would invite the public to come down and speak with her about any issues. Many people were more comfortable doing it that way, and I thought that was an excellent new outgrowth of the mayor's position. So we certainly are going to miss her and glad she could join us from quite a ways around the world, from Finland tonight. So also wanted to thank Julie, and Julie, as everyone has been mentioning, has been such a key player here in Clayton. Julie and I first moved to Clayton back in 84. We moved into the same development in Westwood. And she got on our Westwood Board of Directors and then moved up quickly to the Planning Commission when we saw an opportunity to influence how the city would be developed. She was there for five years and a valuable member there, and they were sorry to see her leave that commission, but I think overjoyed that she was going to be taking that expertise to begin serving on the council, where she then served for 28 years, and I'm sure she thinks that time has just flown by. But she's been a tremendous asset to Clayton and has seen, as she mentioned, the city grow from about $4,500 when we both moved here, and then the addition of so many developments, the largest certainly being O'Kurst Country Club and Development, and then the bypass of our Main Street to protect the traffic going down into our Main Street and the development of downtown with the Grove Park and the Bocce Park, and just so many big improvements, Diablo View Middle School. And Julie was a key organizer to raise money to have a gym added to that school. Initially, that was not going to be part of that school, but she saw the tremendous benefit that would provide to our community, and she was a key player in obtaining funding for that. So that will always be a testament to another visible sign of the impact, Julie, you've had on our community. And as Scott mentioned, you have been a key player, also representing Clayton very well, well beyond our size at the ABAG, which for most people is the Associated Bay Area Governments Group that gets together to deal with common issues for the Bay Area. And Julie did a great job of representing Clayton and protecting the impacts that we may have felt without her involvement on housing and transportation. So she did an excellent job again of representing our interest, even though we were the smallest city to be represented there. And then she also worked with the Metropolitan Transit Commission and was a key player in merging those two groups together to be much more efficient and effective as a dual group, and actually obtained funding then for both groups so both could continue their dual focus on improving and protecting all the impacts as the Bay Area grows. Julie's been very active. It's hard to believe she had any time left over, but she also has been active in the Clayton Historical Society, the Clayton Valley Garden Club, certainly the CBCA Clayton Business and Community Association. So we're very glad she's staying in our community, but we'll certainly miss her on the City Council where she's been such a leader for Clayton for so many years. So thank you very much, Julie, for all of your efforts, and you'll find some comments also in the book that we prepared to help you remember all the friends that you've made and all the contributions you've made to Clayton. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. I was just looking at your page when you came on the line, so thank you.
If we could, I think Basam was next. Basam, you're currently muted. There you go.
Yeah, it had to switch to another page. Thank you, Jeff. Julie, when I moved to Clayton, it was because of how great of a small city it is. After 11 years, I noticed that it is like, like wine. It just gets better with age. This didn't happen from nothing. This is because of you and people like you. So I want to thank you very much for what you did for Clayton in this last 32 years that you served in Clayton, especially for bringing us sidewalks. That is really, really, really important. So thank you, Julie, for everything that you did, and I really appreciate you. Tuya, I knew you via the Planning Commission before even the City Council. One thing I know that you are a smart, good-hearted, tough cookie. So above all, I mean, you did a lot for Clayton. Your expertise and compassion are unmatched. When Clayton needed hard, unpopular decisions, you didn't hide behind the comfortable vote to please some. You took hard decisions for the benefit of Clayton and its future. When people unfairly lied and insulted you, you took it with a smile, and you kept going forward, and you did your decisions for the benefit of Clayton. I am so happy and glad that I could call you my friend, and thank you very much for everything you did for Clayton. Thank you.
You.
Okay, I think we have TV era.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Um, I just wanted to thank Julie and Tuya for the contributions to our city. All your hard work has, hasn't gone unnoticed. And I know you both helped Clayton become what it is today. I want you to know how appreciated you both are. I want to wish you both well and to enjoy your time you will have to yourselves now. It'll be nice for you both to relax and enjoy Clayton as a resident and to continue being involved in our community. I will miss your sweet faces on Zoom. I wish you both a happy and healthy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Scott Denzelow, next.
Hey guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Just a couple of quick points tonight and bear with me. I'm a bit under the weather. Um, want to just give a special shout out like so many others tonight to, uh, outgoing council members, Tuya Catalano and Julie Pierce. Uh, personally really appreciate everything they've done for this town, uh, over the years. And it's amazing to watch the time that they've dedicated toward our city while, uh, receiving a little pay, receiving, uh, or probably uh, receiving a lot more negatives than, uh, thank yous. So, uh, and Tuya, I believe it's a little bit after 5:00 AM your time right now. And, uh, your presence here really reflects your dedication. And so I just wanted to say thank you to, uh, both of you for your time, your dedication, your passion and for everything that you've done and given to this city. It did not go unnoticed and it's certainly appreciated by many. Uh, Julie, it's only in politics, I say this jokingly, it's only in politics that a small town dressmaker can do so much for the town she lives in while also becoming a Sacramento insider just by your very existence. But, uh, also wanted to congratulate Jim Diaz on his reelection and to, uh, new council members Holly Tillman and Peter Cloven on their election. I also, uh, have to admit that I'm particularly touched by the election of Holly. It's really a historic moment in many ways for a little town and long overdue in, uh, many ways. So, uh, I'm sorry again, I'm a, just a bit under the weather. So, uh, bear with me here. Just gonna skip to the end and, uh, just wanted to say one other thing in addition to, uh, yeah, Tuya and Julie. Um, it really touched me this week, what we saw in our town with the homeless family raised over $10,000 and got them all kinds of supplies. And I remember what happened last year when this happened, when we just had one person outside of Safeway and very different reaction. And, uh, this holiday season that was really touching as a member of this town, I can't even begin to say how gratifying, um, it was. So well done Clayton. Definitely doing the right thing. Thank you guys for your time and thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay. Uh, I do not see any other, uh, hands raised. So if you do wish to comment, uh, on this item, feel free to raise your hand. Uh, while in the interim, I will say that, um, Julie, you turned your background back on. But I, I believe there is, uh, at least one other item that you are in receipt of. And if I, I have it on good authority that there, on behalf of the city, there is a Boston rocker.
There is.
In your possession.
There is indeed. Let me.
Um, and so.
So let me turn off the background and I will.
If you could, you could do that or Janet could show a picture, maybe. I'm not sure.
I have a photo of it. Hold on.
Boston rocker. Is it like Bon Jovi or somebody?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's more like Billy Joel, right? No, no, he's, he's different.
Let me show it to you. Let me turn off my background. So you can see the.
Oh, here. See, so Janet one upped you and put a picture of the act of a, of thing on the share screen. But that is the picture in your possession. So this is a, um, I think this is a bit of a tradition here and, uh, for long-term outgoing, uh, council members. There's a plaque on it as well. Um, I don't think, it's hard to read on my tiny screen, but.
It says, "Pierce City Council, 1992 to 2020." And it says, "Mayor and all six terms of being mayor in 95, oh, one, oh, four, nine, 13, and 20." With the Clayton logo on it.
Nice.
Yeah. Can you see that?
Yes. Looks, that looks great. Um, and then, so hopefully you get enough time to, uh, to use it a little bit.
Well, it's, it's actually a tradition that I started way back when Bob Kendall was on the council. And when he right retired after many, many years on the council, I had seen this um, in an ad that came regularly, but I also had seen one because my dad got one when he retired from math department at State University. And I'd had the opportunity to sit in many, many times. And it was very comfortable. And I said, "Let's do this for Bob. And then when I'm done, I want one." So now I have a match set. My dad's in mine together in the living room. And that's wonderful. I thank you very, very much. And Tuya, there is a lamp coming from you, for you, from the same company with your dates of service as well. So that should be here hopefully by the time you get back home. We don't know. It's a, it's a long delivery time at this, this time of year, but it will be here. So we will have that. There, that's what.
Yeah. Oh, nice. This all works better when we're in person. It's a little bit different when we're not. So, um, and then I think, you know, lastly, uh, we are working on a, a special proclamation, um, for you, Mayor Pierce. Uh, that's going to be presented at a separate council meeting. So we could look forward to that.
Thank you very much.
And I'm looking at the participant list to see if we have any other comments on this item. We are still on item five remarks. I don't see any. Okay. Uh, well then we'll close this item. And next on the agenda are oaths of office by newly elected council members. Not quite sure how we're going to administer the oath. Um, I think Janet is going to administer the oath. Are we gonna do it one at a time or in group?
Thank you. Yes, we're gonna give it as a group. So I will.
So well, first, first we need to bring in, um, Holly and Peter. Uh, Jim is already here.
Half of Jim is here.
You can't handle the whole gym. Hello, Holly. We're looking for Peter.
Hello.
There we go. Good pure moment to situate himself here.
So I'll have Peter, Holly, and Jim Diaz unmute. And then we'll go ahead and perform the oath of allegiance for public office. Everybody ready?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
I, Holly Tillman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Reservations.
On purpose of evasion.
I missed that.
Oh, and without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
Purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. You may now sign your oath of allegiance for public office. Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so next, uh, well, let's see, there's no public comment. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is the annual reorganization of the council. Uh, there's three items here. First is the election of the mayor. Second is the election of the vice mayor. And then they're recognized and remarked by the new mayor and council members. So we'll conduct the election of the mayor first. Um, this is done by nomination. There's the, I believe if you've read the agenda, it kind of describes the process. So, um, I'm gonna call on people if they want to nominate, that'd be fine. Um, once the, we conclude the nomination and election of the mayor, we move on to the vice mayor. So, um, if there are nominations, we can offer them now. Uh, Jim, if you'd like to go.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Jeff Wan. I would like to proudly nominate our long-term serving Vice Mayor Jeff Wan to the position of mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Holly.
And I would like to nominate CW up for the position of mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any other nominations?
Matt, you want to do it?
Matt is not a participant in the nomination process, but you are welcome to try. Okay. Uh, well, it looks like, so there are two nominations. So the nomination for, uh, mayor's closed. Um, the process calls for a vote on the order in which things are nominated. Uh, so if we want, uh, a vote, it's the first of three essentially. So, um, we can, I guess we can do a roll call? No? Uh, I'll, I'll just go ahead. So, um, I accept the nomination. So if you guys want to do a vote, uh, Jim, I guess you can go first.
Yes.
Uh, Carl?
I'm gonna accept the nomination, so I'll say no.
Okay. Um, Holly?
No.
Peter?
No.
Okay. So that fails. Uh, I think next up is Carl. Um, Jim, you wanna go ahead?
No.
Carl, you, you're welcome to vote for yourself.
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
And Peter?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's three votes. Uh, I will, I would also vote no, but, uh, three votes carry. So, uh, with that, congratulations, Carl. You have been, uh, voted as the mayor. Um, and I will turn over the, the chair, the presiding, as the presiding officer, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you, uh, everybody for, uh, electing me mayor. It's a very exciting time. Uh, it's a great time to, to be the mayor, uh, unfortunately in a Zoom time. Uh, but with our new, um, our new council members and our existing council members, I think we'll have a very tight group. Uh, I'm looking forward to, um, doing the bidding of the people, uh, with regard to the way this election went. I'm not gonna rehash the election. Uh, but, uh, I think the people have spoken that they would like to have, uh, not only checks and balances on our, on our council, but also civility. And that's what I'm gonna be looking for in my term this year. And so with that, I'm going to go, uh, oh, by the way, and Scott, thanks a lot for putting me in this position. Um, he said that it would be impossible to follow Julie Pierce. And so thanks for the vote of confidence. Um, but he's right, you know, and back in the days when I used to do comedy, we used to say, whatever you do, don't follow the headliner. Well, no matter if Jeff would have won or I would have won, uh, we're following the headliner. And this is gonna be a very difficult thing to do to follow Julie Pierce. And thank goodness she's not going anywhere and we'll be there in case we need her. Uh, so now we move on to the election of the vice mayor and, um, I'm going to nominate, uh, Peter Cloven, uh, as a vice mayor. I know he's new to the council, but he's not new to the, uh, public arena of being the chair of the, of the planning commission. I think that he and I will work excellently together. Uh, and I know that he's committed to the city. So that is my nomination. And I guess Jeff, I'll move on to you.
Yeah, I'll vote no.
No nomination from you? No, uh?
No.
Anybody else have a nomination?
No.
No other nominations for vice mayor? All right. Well, Jeff votes no. Um, Jim? No. Holly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay. And that's a three to two vote and that carries. So we now have, uh, congratulations to Vice Mayor Cloven. And so he and I will be, uh, working closely together, uh, as we move forward to try and reestablish some of the relationships that we're losing, uh, with regard to Julie Pierce leaving us. Um, and, uh, that's gonna be a tough act to, to do. Now, yes, Holly?
May I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Curious about the procedure. If, since there wasn't a, another nomination, did we even need to vote?
Well, I think we just made it formal, right, Molly? We did.
Okay. And, and, and I just confirmed, Mayor, um, you, you, I think you voted yes, that you went around, but I.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I, yes, I did. Yes, I did the nomination. I vote yes. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're gonna move on now from all of this and, uh, we'll go to the, uh, reports, planning commission. Uh, no meeting was held. Trails and landscape, uh, no meeting was held there. Uh, city manager staff report. You're muted.
Honorable Mayor, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to go back. There was a, um, agenda item to allow new council members and the new mayor to.
Uh, to remarks. Yes, remarks. I see that. Thank you very much. Yes. So, so I guess we'll start with, um, with Vice Mayor, uh, Cloven. You have some remarks to, uh, to talk about today in your, on your newly elected position.
So I just want to say that I'm completely humbled, uh, by the support to the people of Clayton. I didn't expect that I could, uh, do as well in the election process as I did. Um, I love this town. And I want to be very clear that the person that you saw during the campaign, which was full of optimism and hope and, uh, desire to serve the city is the same person I am. There was no errors. It's who I am. Um, it's a shame that the election got out of control the way it did. I, um, have complete and utter respect for all the, all the council members that are, that they're serving. Both elected and previously elected. I am looking forward to working with all of you. I have a lot of respect for, for Jeff and Jim. I have seen the way they analyze things and they present themselves. And I am looking forward to supporting your leadership in the future. Um, but at this point, I'm very happy that we are able to unite the town and heal the divide. And I'm gonna work really hard to get out there and do that. And, uh, I want to thank you all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and, uh, council member Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor Wolf. I did want to say, um, to kind of echo what Peter just said, which is to thank everyone for the overwhelming support that I had during my campaign. Um, I have to first and foremost thank my family, um, my husband Matt and my two daughters, Jordan and Jada. Because I would not have been able to get through these last five months without them. Um, and their support of me, uh, and everybody else that rallied around us during this election. Uh, it was difficult, um, but I know that there's gonna be tougher roads ahead. And I know that if the five of us can work together, um, we might not agree all the time, but I think if we can put our differences aside and realize that we're doing the work for the citizens of Clayton and unite, try to unite the town, that we're gonna do a lot of great things in the next, um, at least two years, while two of you guys are still here. But the next four, while Peter, Jim and I are working together. So thank you, everyone. Um, I'm looking forward to it and, uh, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Thank you and congratulations to the both of you. Uh, and to Jim too. Congratulations on your reelection. Um, okay. So we'll move on to the, uh, staff report. City manager? Do I get a chance to comment? Okay. So it's your stage. You, you recognize me. I do. Most of you there, I recognize. I want to thank the citizens of Clayton. I never expected this, the tremendous amount of support that I received to the point where I got more votes than I ever dreamed I would.
to the point where I got more votes than I ever dreamed I would and was fortunate enough to find a majority of the city vested their trust in me again for another four years by putting me at the first on the list, which I sincerely appreciate that. And I will look forward to working to better this community as I have for the past 40 years of my existence here in Clayton. And I will work with this council to make sure we bridge those gaps that need to be brought together. We have a unfortunate divide in this city, and it needs to be addressed. I will reach out to fellow council members, and we will make it happen. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jim, and I look forward to working with you, and I know we all do, on, on healing that divide that we've seen over the last couple of elections. Okay, now, Fran, it's all yours now.
Thank you, Mayor Wolf and council members. Third time's a charm here. I just wanted to give a quick update on some work we're doing over in Keylock Way. And the Public Safety Committee came together a few weeks back. And they had a meeting, and we had dozens of residents participate. I think it was the largest committee participation I've seen here in the city since I've been serving you as the interim city manager. And we heard multiple ideas. And I wanted to give you a brief update that we are going to be seating a new Public Safety Committee on December 15th. And so the next meeting will occur after that committee is appointed by the current city council. And then we will be, the chief of police and our traffic engineer will be coming back to the city council in working in, in coordination with the Public Safety Committee to report back on what are the viable options out of all of those ideas that were generated by the community. I did want to give you a brief update that one of the kind of low-hanging fruit ideas was to look at painting the curb at the end of Keylock Way as a red zone, so it means there would be no parking allowed. And the police would have an opportunity to be able to enforce parking in that area. And that is something that we have reached out to the community today. They have, they're being delivered hand notices on all of Keylock Way about this pilot program. We're going to try it for 90 days. We're giving them a number to City Hall to call if they are having issues while we're piloting these programs. So staff will be collecting all of those incoming calls from residents to provide to the Public Safety Committee as well as the council as you consider additional ideas for safety and quality of life issues there. And we are also mailing them to their addresses. So we've, we've, we're taking two forms of communication to try to make sure we get to the residents. And I have communicated, well, I'm communicating with you tonight. My last day will be December 11th, but staff will have that curb painted before I leave. So we're trying to move as quickly as we can on at least one idea that came from the residents. It may not make everyone happy, but we figured we got to try something as we work in parallel with you and the community to do as much as we can feasibly and afford. And so I just wanted to give you that update, pass the word. And we are doing many touchpoints with that street right now to make sure that they're well informed. Lastly, I just wanted to congratulate reelection to Councilmember Diaz as well as election to Councilmember Tillman and Clovin. I wish you the best of luck. And I wanted to thank the current council mayor Pierce and council, I mean, council member Catalano for trusting me with your beautiful and charming community for the last four months. It has been a wonderful experience, I've made so many new friends. And I just wanted to end on that note and say thank you, and I'll see you guys around town.
Well, thank you, Fran, did a great job, and, and we appreciate your, your efforts for Clayton, really, really do. It may be a bit out of order now, and you'll have to, I'm not a constitutional scholar or a civics major, but I think that the work of the ad hoc safety committee is very, very important. And sitting on that committee the last two meetings and realizing how much needs to be done. I would like to seat that committee now, if that's possible. Is that, is that too far out of order?
It is.
It is. It's too far out of order, even though, even though we're, we're up against it here.
Yeah, it's, it's not on the agenda, so I, we can, you know, put that on the, the next meeting. And I think that was already scheduled.
All right, okay, then we'll skip that for now, but I'll have some conversations in the meantime. All right, so let's move on to a public comment on non-agenda items. And that means anything that is not on the agenda. And I, I don't really have any control here with regard to people, but please put your hand up if you'd like to speak on a non-agenda item tonight.
Hey, Carl, you skipped the other items on item eight.
What did I skip? Oh, the, the reports, the council reports, yes, I'm moving too quickly. All right, so the council reports, let's find out what you've all been doing the last couple of weeks. You want to start, Jeff?
I don't have a report, I was just looking at the agenda. Not for me.
Okay, and, and Jim?
Yep. Just a minor amount of business with the holidays. But on the 19th of December, or excuse me, November, we decorated downtown. On the 21st, attended the, attended the CBC virtual meeting. And over the past few days, I've been meeting with a variety of constituents on a number of issues.
That's it. Holly, Peter? Okay, and then for me, I had, I also decorated the downtown. I saw you down there, Jim, I met with Jim as well this past week. I've met-
Didn't you paint the town red?
Yes, that's right. And met with former mayor Pierce. By the way, all these were separate meetings, also with Vice Mayor Clovin. I worked on the virtual tree lighting video, which is going to be up on YouTube come Saturday, this Saturday. If you're missing our lovely tree lighting ceremony that we do every first Saturday in December, we're going to have a virtual one. I've worked with A.J. Chippero on this video. He's put together really nice footage from past events, and it came together nicely. So that'll, we'll put the, on the city website, we'll put the link, and, and everybody will put it up on social media, I'm sure. Had a conversation with, with our interim city manager, and I had my yearly physical. Okay, now, we're going to move on to the public comment on non-agenda items. I think I've covered everything on the agenda so far. So anybody have their hand up? Let's see. Basam, Basam has his hand up, so we'll go to Basam.
Mayor Wolf, I actually had Jenny.
I don't have that, Jenny. I have, I have Basam first here on my, but yes, you, okay, go ahead.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jenny, and I'm sure you guys talk to me, some of them. Peter, Holly, we have texts, and Jim Diaz, we met. And Matthew, we have emails, and Jeff, we talk and we email. So I just want to know, I've lived here for 16 years. I mean, I always say the small town feels good, but I really don't see any progress being made in Clayton for the last 16 years. Am I missing something? That's my comment. And second is, I want to know, what is the status about Clayton Municipal Code 17-95-020? That's all. Two minutes and 15 seconds.
That's what you have left. And I, the, the code that she's talking about is the code, is that the cannabis code?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I don't understand why City of Clayton has a different code with the state law. And that is not okay, in my book. Why is it different?
Okay, Molly, do you need to, do we need to answer that question now?
No, we don't, we can follow up, but as you know, public comment is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council.
Right.
And, and we can take that comment into consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Jenny, we will get back to you. Okay, do you have anybody else ahead now of Basam?
I do not, Basam is next. And, and you?
Unmute.
Yeah, yeah, it takes a second to switch from regular to the other one.
A very nice picture of you.
Oh, there's a picture of me?
Yeah, sure, looked like you're giving a seminar.
Oh, yeah, I do those a lot. Anyhow, I just wanted to congratulate Mayor C W on the new position.
Thank you.
I served with you on the planning commission, and I am very aware and comfortable about you leading our city for the next year. So congratulations. And also, I am very excited and happy and want to congratulate Vice Mayor Clovin and Councilmember Tillman, who will bring a lot of honesty and, and hard work to our city. And congratulations to you all, that's all what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next hand I have here is De Vera. Do you take off your mask, Dee, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I just want to congratulate and welcome our new council members, Peter Clovin, Holly Tillman, and welcome back to the council, Jim Diaz. I also want to say thank you to Jeff Wan for your contributions as our mayor, and to congratulate C W on your new position as our new mayor, and Peter Clovin as our new vice mayor. I think you all will make a great team, and I'm looking forward to our council working together in solidarity in the coming years. I wish you all a very happy and healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Okay, I have Scott Denzilow next. Wait for him to unmute. He's probably sneezing.
Nope, there you go. Hey, guys. So I just wanted to say congratulations again, Jim, on your reelection. It's great working with you downtown on the decorations, did a great job bringing your leadership and experience, just years of experience there, really appreciated that. And the bocce courts look great because of, out of what you did. Holly, like I said earlier, unbelievably proud of you. It's about time, as you like to say, or as I like to say, it's about damn time. So forgive my language, but congratulations. Peter, it was great working with you during the campaign. Really think you're the right man for the job, so to speak. You represent Clayton well. Wouldn't have worked so hard for you if I didn't believe in you, man. So of course, you know, I'm going to hold your nose to the grindstone, but I have faith in you. So, you know, great job. And Mayor C Dub, kind of shocked, but very proud of you as well. You've done so much for this town over the years, and I'm very proud of our leadership right now. It's a big night, very eventful meeting, and I'm just really proud of all you guys. And congratulations to all of y'all. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Fran, strike the word damn from the record, please.
Please don't.
Okay, anybody else want to speak here? Or forever hold your peace? I don't see any other hand raised. Janet, do you have anybody?
Mayor Wolf, I do not see any other hand raised.
Okay, then we'll close the public comment. Moving on, we have no public hearings or action items. Coming up now to the council items for requests on directives for future meetings. Does anybody have anything they would like to bring up? I see Peter's hands up.
Thank you. I'm keenly aware of all the recent housing regulations that have been brought forth this past year. And I'm also very aware that they keep on coming. And what I need to know is, as the council person, is what's coming up and how is it going to impact us? How is it going to impact Clayton's ability to control land use? So I'm specifically asking that in the future, that staff and legal counsel work together to put together an open forum to educate us on the impacts of this legislation and to find out what we as a city council can do relative to zoning, i.e. upzoning and downzoning. And I want this to be done in the future, whether it can be either at a city council meeting in an open session or a joint study session or a town hall or some, as part of the upcoming charrettes, but I want it done as quickly as possible. We need to know what's going on, and we need to know what our abilities as a city is to affect zoning in our town.
Okay. Thank you, Peter, we'll do that. Anybody else have anything that you want to bring up for future?
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
So I recently joined a, a group of local electeds that are interested in maintaining local patrol. And there's a few items that they have- -at a Rena methodology. So I drafted a letter to ABAG and HCD, and I'd like to bring it forward as an agenda item to discuss for the city to send. I'll submit it as part of the agenda packet so that it can be distributed to everyone so we can discuss whether we want to send it or not. And then, that's one. The other one is the, you know, Peter just mentioned rezoning. I'd like to put a discussion item on downzoning certain properties nearby downtown. And I could work with Fran or Rena on putting together that proposal.
That sounds a lot like what Peter was talking about. Would you be a, maybe the two of you?
I think Peter was talking about asking for the staff to prepare an information item. And so we would need to take that as a action to direct staff first. But I'm not asking for an informational item. I'm asking for a specific action to be taken.
Got that all, Fran? Okay, anything else? Holly? Nothing? Nothing, okay. All right, well, we have no closed session. So I just want to take this moment to, once again, thank everybody for putting me in this position. Welcome our new council members and our reelected council member. I know that it's going to be a very difficult year coming up. We've got a lot of things to do, especially with regard to our downtown, which is very much a priority of mine, that land downtown. It's something that we really have to take into consideration and figure out what we're going to do with, because if we don't do something, we could lose it. And I'm going to work very hard for all the people of Clayton. Like I said, I'm not a constitutional scholar, I'm not a civics major. But I have been around the city of Clayton for a long time, almost as long as Jim has. And, and I love this city. And I'm going to work very, very hard to, to make our citizens feel that they have a, a voice and that they're participating. So I'm going to ask a lot of you to step up. We have the charrette process coming up, and there'll be opportunities for people to be involved. We have a divided city, that's, that's obvious, but it's something that we have to work toward healing. And like I said originally, I think that people here on the council will have checks and balances, but we'll also work, to work together in a civil manner. So with that, I thank everybody, and I think that is all. So we are adjourned, and stay safe, Clayton, thank you. Our next meeting is the 15th of December.
Don't forget the Jihad meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so we're adjourned on the, on the city council meeting, all right? So now we are going to go to the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District meeting, and I'm going to turn it over to Chairperson Wan. I think Chairperson Wan may have left.
I'm trying to-
Maybe let him know, yes, that we have this meeting. This is the more exciting of two meetings that we have tonight. So I guess we can start this member, this, this meeting with Councilmember Diaz, who is the vice chair of this committee, correct?
You can. I will bring the order, call to order the Jihad meeting of December 1st. And the first item is, make sure everyone is here, so if the city clerk would take a roll.
Thank you, Vice Chair Diaz. Board Member Clovin.
Here.
Board Member Tillman.
Here.
Board Member Wolf.
Here.
And Vice Chair Diaz.
Present. All right, and I gather we're trying to track down the chair. Is that correct?
He's logging back in.
Okay, then I will hold off going to public comment.
There he is.
All right. Chairman, we have made sure everyone is here, and the next item is the public comment, and I throw it back to you.
Hold on, let me get myself situated here. We still have the attendees? All right. Yeah, sorry about that. I thought we were over, you know.
Jim caught us at the last minute.
You know, you said the meeting was adjourned.
Yeah.
All right.
He didn't check the next agenda.
I guess you called to, you called it to order already?
Yes.
All right, cool. If there are any public comments on the agenda for the Jihad, feel free to raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, close that. We have one item on the consent calendar. That's to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Is there any questions on this item at this time? No, I actually have, I think there needs to be a correction to the minutes. At the last meeting, as I have done on the last two meetings for the Jihad, I've asked for a list of duties of the Jihad and a schedule that itemizes what is going to be done and when, as far as maintenance items and what is responsible. And I don't see that reflected in the minutes here. So if we could update that with that amendment, I would like to do that. That's my only item on the minutes. Jim, you're muted.
I will move as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Janet, if you can take the roll.
Absolutely. Board Member Clovin?
As I wasn't at that meeting, I will abstain.
Board Member Tillman?
I will also abstain.
Board Member Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Chair Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair Wan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the annual reorganization of the board directors. This is conducted in the same way as the last one, if I believe. Let me just verify that. So if anyone would like to nominate anyone, I think, you know, as a hazing ritual, new councilmembers get to be chair and vice chair of the Jihad. So I'll nominate Holly as chair of the Jihad.
Am I supposed to say I accept?
You don't have a choice.
You don't decline, then you've got it.
I'll accept.
You two are shoe-ins.
All right, is there, I'll vote yes. Does anyone want to vote no?
Move by acclamation.
All right, second. Okay, so I will turn over the chairship to you, Holly.
Can I apologize? Can we just have a formal vote, a roll call vote to comply with?
Okay. Jim, would you like to vote?
I vote yes.
I vote yes. Carl?
Okay.
Peter?
Sure, yes.
Holly?
Yes.
Okay, I turn over the chairship to you, Holly. Congratulations as your chair of the Jihad. Go nuts.
Great, so then we will move down the agenda to item four B, which is a nomination and election of the vice chair. And are there any nominations from the other councilmembers?
We're going to nominate Peter Clovin as vice chair. He should be vice everything this year.
I like vice.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? I'm taking that as a no. Peter?
I guess I'm serving if I'm elected.
Okay, so then I think, Mala, do we now need to take a vote?
Correct.
Okay, so Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Member Wolf.
Member, member, yes.
Oh, because we're in the Jihad. Member Wolf, thank you.
I'm very board member, yes.
Member Diaz?
Yes.
Member Wan?
Yes.
Member Clovin?
Sure.
Come on, say no.
I'm also a yes. Okay. That concludes the nomination process for vice chair. Item number five on the agenda is public hearings. There were none. There were no action items. We're now at item number seven, board items. Are there any items that anybody would like to bring up for future meetings?
I reiterate my request from the prior three meetings, and that is to have a published document that reflects the duties and schedule of the Jihad so that the public can be aware of when things are being done, what is there responsible for.
Okay, and is Janet the one that needs to add that in?
Yeah, she's got it.
Okay, okay, great. Anything else? Okay, looks like that's it, so that we're at item number eight, which is adjournment, and the next meeting of the Jihad Board of Directors will be scheduled as needed. I think we're officially adjourned now until December fifteenth. Am I supposed to gavel something? Okay. All right, then everybody, have a great couple of weeks. Stay safe, and we'll see you on the fifteenth. Good night.
Good night.